Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education meeting tonight for Monday, November the 4th, 2013. This is our regularly scheduled work session. And so at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our first order of business tonight is to set the agenda. Board members, as you know, we've had the agenda now for a number of days. Do I have a motion that we approve? The agenda as it is presented.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Ms. Carpenter seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, and so we'll move on into the meeting. We have a number of reports tonight, and the first of those reports will be on the QSCB financial update. And I don't see Ms. Klutz. Is she here?
She's still.
Okay, so she's still there, okay.
And Lynn is with her.
So we'll have to pass on to that. So we'll move into, well, she does the third report also. Okay, is Adam here?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, if, Adam, you'll come forward. He's gonna give us the report on the annual audit for the fiscal year 2012-13. And we appreciate you coming tonight and being with us.
Thank you. Yes, please, if you would. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry Kelly couldn't make it, but there's nothing in here that she doesn't know already, so everything should be just fine here. Couple weeks ago, we sent over a summary document that's up on the screen here. It's some key information from your financial statements that we'll also go over later. But starting with the summary information, the summary financial information. It has some tables here. Again, I'm with Anderson Smith Wyke. We came in the spring and started our fieldwork. Our audit is comprised of two components, a compliance part and a financial part. We're gonna go over the financial part here first, and then the compliance will be at the end. But the financial part includes coming in at year-end. And we were in here in the beginning of September, and we audit your financial statements for material accuracy. And the results of those financial statements are summarized here in this presentation. The first one here presented is the general fund cash and cash equivalents for the, in comparison for the last three years. And it shows the cash balances from 2011 to 2012. There was a significant increase with a slight decrease here in the prior year, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. Cash on hand is just under $20 million in the general and special revenue funds. Those are the two special revenue funds that, they comprise the county money and also the special state and federal grants that are received. So this is, this is the money that's probably most tightly managed. It's the money that you use or dip into when state and federal funds adjust on you. So these cash balances are in your general and special revenue funds. Next, we have a comparison of the fund balance for those two funds combined. And again, it shows along with that increase in cash in 2012, was also an increase in fund balance. And again, for the current year, we had just a slight decrease in fund balance, as some of that fund balance was used for previously designated purposes, specific purposes that were planned for over a year ago. So you see fund balance in total is just over $14 million, and the fund balance that's available for appropriation is just over $12.5 million. The next graph shows the revenues and expenditures for both those funds. And you can see, again, with that increase in cash and increase in fund balance, last year's net profit, net income, or increase in fund balance was around $7 million. And when you compare that to this year, there was a slight decrease in fund balance, again, using up some of those cash reserves, that fund balance reserve for those specific projects and plans that were, again, put in place over a year ago. So those graphs there are followed by the information that makes up the balance sheet and income statement summarized essentially in, for both the general and other special revenue funds. You have your, again, total cash on hand, $18.9 million. Liabilities, $5.9 million, which creates that fund balance of $14 million that we saw earlier on the graph. The two pieces that are, make up the available for appropriation, the fund balance that's available, are the assigned and unassigned numbers. So that 6.8 million and 6.1 million, those combined make up the fund balance that's available for appropriation. That's the fund balance that's available to be spent. And that represents about 6% of your total expenditures for the year. When you look at all your funds combined, both state, federal, and these special revenue funds, total expenditures were just over $215 million, and your fund balance available for appropriation is $12.9 million. So just over 6% of fund balance available for appropriation when compared to-
Is that standard, is that standard for other school systems?
The LGC and DPI, no one gives a set guidance on what fund balance should be. I think the guidelines for counties and cities is, they recommend at least a 7%, which is about one month, just over one month's operating expenditures on hand. So 6% is in line with other school systems, and is in line, a little lower than the guidance that's put out for, again, cities and counties. But there's no specific guidance directly for school systems, with their funding a little different and relying so heavily on the county and then state directly. But 7%, if it's healthy for a county and healthy for a city, I would think that that would be a healthy number for a school system to strive to reach as well. So you're sitting there at 6%, again, basically one month's operating expenditures on hand as of June 30, 2013. The second section there shows the revenues and expenses. Those are the revenues and expenses. Again, I said you had previously planned to increase your expenditures. You can see that when you look at the expenditures for the current year versus the prior year, $55 million versus the $46 million from last year. So that was a result of some initiatives, I think, some one-to-one laptop things and some other maintenance type items, a list of things that you spent that money on this year that you essentially saved up for last year. So you see there, the net change in fund balance was a decrease of $435,000. The next page, you have the capital outlay fund. This will vary in its activity depending on what progress you have going on. It carries a very low fund balance, and you see this year, revenues and expenses were just over five, or $8 million. So fund balance at the end of the year for the capital outlay fund was $368,000. Next, we have some information here on your school food service fund, your child nutrition fund. The graph shows your cash and cash equivalent on hands, your revenues, expenses, and net income for the year. They're very comparable to the previous two years. Your child nutrition department, it does a very good job. This year was particularly challenging with the increases in required costs for the healthy foods initiatives. The child nutrition department was able to increase its federal reimbursements while keeping food costs on hand, or in check. And you can see that on the next page, the expenditures and revenues and balance sheet summarized here for the school food service fund. The revenues that I was talking about, those federal reimbursements, are on the second line. The revenues this year totaled $8 million versus the $7.3 million last year. And that's gonna be a result of a few more kids on free and reduced lunch, but also higher reimbursement rates for healthier foods. So that increase in revenue is offset by the increase in food costs, but the food cost only went up, not even $300,000, from $5.1 million to $5.4 million. So at the end of the year, the change in net assets for the school food service fund was $817,000, and is very comparable to last year. Cash on hand at the end of the year, $4.7 million. And I believe there's already plans in place to spend down some of that cash. I think some equipment purchases and renovations and updates have been put on hold. So $4.7 million at the end of the year for cash and cash equivalents in the school food service funds. Next, this is a graph showing your total expenditures. And we talked a lot about the general and special revenue funds, but included in your expenditures for the year are your state and federal. Those make up, state in particular makes up the largest chunk of your expenditures. And you see the various funding sources here. Local expenditures, under $60 million, and state expenditures, over $140 million. So this is a breakdown of, again, your funding sources, and it's very comparable from previous years. You can see, also broken down on the next graph, those same expenditures on a per pupil basis. When you're in a system that grows seven or eight hundred students per kid, you can't just look at the raw numbers from the state of 140 million expenditures. We also look at it on a per pupil basis. And the information on those graphs is on the next chart. And it shows your ADM at 29,721 kids. Your per pupil expenditures for the year in total, excluding capital outlay, was $7,257. And you see the breakdown, again, with that local number dipping in the previous year, again, saving up money to spend on those projects that you spent it on then in the current year. Finally, again, I talked to you about the, we have two parts of the audit, the financial part and the compliance part. During our compliance testing, our auditing of the requirements for state, some of your state and federal grants, we came across no findings and had zero dollars in question costs as related to those findings. And I'll, again, go over here to the financial statements and show you exactly where we see those, and they have, basically, our opinion letters saying that both financially and compliance-wise, very clean audit. So you should have also been given a letter from us to the Board of Education. This is a required communication letter. This is where we would include anything that wasn't included in the financial statements that we thought you should know about the audit, whether, how it went, or whether we had any difficulties. It's a standard letter that we issue along with financial statements. It also is a clean letter. It states that we had no difficulties. We had, the Cabarrus County Schools didn't seek outside verification or a second opinion from other auditors. We came across no uncorrected or corrected misstatements that we thought you should be aware of. We had no disagreements with management. Management freely signed a representation letter that was provided to us, again, also on the date of these financial statements. And there were no other audit findings or issues, again, that we thought we should disclose to you. So again, that letter is also a clean opinion letter saying that the audit went well. If you want to turn to the financial statements, I'll point out our opinion letters. On page one, the independent auditor's report, this, again, is our opinion letter. And the most important paragraph in this letter is on the top of page two. And again, this is in the bound copy of the financial statements. And it's the opinion paragraph, and it states that, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above presented fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the Board of Education on June 30, 2013, for the year then ended." So again, this is in the financial statements. This is your financial statement opinion letter. It is a clean, unmodified opinion.
Okay, Adam, thank you so much for coming and bringing the report. Board members, you've had this, you've reviewed it. I think there was a couple of questions, but now will those questions answered? Okay, do I have any further comment or questions? Mr. Phillips?
Just one point of clarification. So on the fund balance, I think you said the overall fund balance, if I go back to which page is that? One, two, three, four, five?
For the general fund and-
For the general fund, you said it's basically, what was it, that 6.8 million plus the 6.1 million?
That's right. Those are the, those are what's available for appropriation, what's available to be spent. The other items, they're non-spendable and restricted for various reasons.
We've already designated it, probably-
But those are, they're restricted above that. They're restricted for the fact that you have inventory and receivables. So they absolutely can't be spent until, until those receivables are received. So the assigned and the unassigned, those are what's available to be designated, appropriated for next year's spending. So again, those are the two spendable amounts.
The real core of my question was going to be the $4 million or so that you said was in the food service fund. Is that included in one of these two?
No.
Either the 6.8 or the 6.1?
No, the, these two funds have their own separate fund balances, and this is the fund balance for those two funds. The school food service fund is a separate business-type fund that has its own fund balance and its own minimum requirements and maximum requirements of how much cash and fund balance it can have on hand. So, no, that 4.7 million is a separate fund balance, again, for child nutrition.
Mr. Phillips, Dr. Shepherd has a comment relevant to your question.
Just want to make sure we're clear that the $14 million that you see listed there, or 6.8 that you've already appropriated in your budget this year. So that's not available tonight for us to make a decision whether to spend or not. It's already been spent. You've made that decision already.
That's right. That's already been appropriated in the original budget resolution for most of that, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Phillips. We have any further questions? I think I seen Rob have one.
Yeah, it's not really a question, but it's a comment that, full report is available on our website. Kelly has uploaded that to the website for anybody, I mean, members of the public that might want to see it.
That's right, yeah. It's, the entire financial statements, there are 63 pages. It has each fund broken down, some budget versus actual numbers, the financial statement footnotes that line out the key accounting policies of the board, and then also the opinion letter for the financial statements and for all of the, both the state and federal compliance audits that we did. So all that's available on there. And again, like I said, all clean audit opinions. We didn't have any findings. Kelly and her staff are always well-prepared for us. It's probably one of the most well-prepared school boards that we do audit. So we like to thank her for that. I don't know if she showed up yet. Nope. So she's not here for that either?
We'll make sure to pass that along.
Pass that along, yeah. Oh, yeah, let her know it was-
Well, I'm sure she would like to have been here versus where she's at. So anyway.
Well, we make, we make sure to tell her. We appreciate the preparedness. And again, she's familiar with all these numbers, and we've met with her on these. So if you have any questions.
Just quickly, how many years has your firm performed these audits for us?
This is our third year. Yeah, third year performing the audit, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, once again, Adam, I thank you for being here tonight, giving us the report in Kelly's absence, and like to publicly thank Kelly and her staff for the wonderful work. And I guess there's a number of years in a row. I guess it would be three, four years in a row, three years since you've been doing it, that we've had zero findings, zero complaints. So that means we gotta be doing something right, which really and truly, we're doing a lot of things right. That's just one more on the list.
That's right. As you add to the list.
I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you for having me.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on, and whenever Ms. Klutz and Mr. Wicki get here, we'll back up and do the reports. But for now, we'll have, we'll go on into the, no, they say one more report. This is from Jason Van Heukleem, and he's here, he's ready, and this is on the EOC and
Mr. Schu, members of the board, it's my pleasure to kind of go over some of the initial assessment data that we have from the 2012-2013 school year. And before I get into the numbers, I want to make sure we're clear that we have a lot to celebrate in Cabarrus County schools. And as we look at our data, it is evident that our teachers have worked extremely hard and have performed at some of the highest levels we've seen in this district. And our students' performance is something to be celebrated. And so I do want to put this in context for a second before we get into the numbers. Imagine in your business, if you had been asked to perform at a higher level than you've ever been asked to perform before, and new standards were set forth for your own individual job, and then you were asked to do that with very little professional development or training to help get you to those new standards, and absolutely zero resources that align to those new standards. And then on top of that, you found out that your job performance and your evaluation was gonna be tied really tightly to how well you did on these new standards. And then the last piece of that would be, you have a year to do this. And that's exactly the scenario that our teachers have been in over the last year, is they embarked on a journey to teach new standards to students, standards they hadn't seen before, standards we had to write new curriculum for. And I can tell you that they just did an amazing job. And so everything that you see tonight is gonna be a celebration and something that I really want to make sure we communicate to our teachers how well they did and how hard they worked. And so please join me in that. The first report we're gonna look at tonight is what's called an EVAAS report. EVAAS is a new measuring stick whereby we judge the growth of students, okay? So this is the report that we really like in education because it takes kids from where they are and shows how well they grew over the course of a year based on the education they received. And so this takes into account factors such as poverty, English as a second language, home life, all of the risk factors that come with many of our students. And it allows us to show our measurement in terms, in terms of growth. And in most simplest terms, they make the reporting pretty easy on the surface, but it's complicated once you get into the formulas and things. But in the most simplest terms, blue is awesome. Blue means you exceeded the growth expectation that the state of North Carolina set forth by more than two standard deviations. Green means you, you did great job. You met the growth expectation as, as set forth by the state of North Carolina. And red means you, you did not meet the growth standard as set forth by the state of North Carolina. And what you can see in this first chart is that we have a lot of blue and green. And when you compare that to last year's data, you see a lot of growth, okay? So last year in 11-12, you see some negative numbers there. That means we did not meet our growth targets. However, this year, you see all positive numbers except for fifth grade science. In addition, you see a lot of blue, okay? And really what blue means, EVAAS is a competitive formula, which means not every school system, not every school, not every teacher can be blue in the state of North Carolina. It's distributed across the averages. So when you're blue, you're at the top of the game. You're at the top of the, of the state in terms of your performance in comparison to other districts in the state. And so you can see that our blue shows that we are at the top of the state in many of these categories. And our green shows that we're doing really, really well, okay? So this is something to be celebrating. We have celebrated this with our schools and with our teachers. Many of you have joined our schools at celebrations. I know at Concord Middle School, there was a celebration there, and many others. So our teachers are very excited about this data. Another data point for you is that 93% of our teachers in Cabarrus County schools are either met their growth target or exceeded their growth target. 93% of teachers in this district met or exceeded their growth target. That's something we're very proud of. You also know that in this whole scenario, we, when we raise standards, we also expected our proficiency rates to go down, okay? So that's the bar that says, is a child proficient or not? And typically, our proficiency rates range from 75% proficient to 85% proficient on any given indicator. And those rates went down drastically, okay, because we have a new standard. We've raised the bar, okay? But the only way to judge that in this first year is really compare that data across the state. And so what I've done here is to try to summarize. You have access to all the individual proficiency rates for each of the categories. But here you can see how we did compared to ourselves from last year and the distance from the state average. So what I like to do here is go through these first two columns here. And you can just see, I'll just use third grade math as an example. In 11-12, we were 1.7 percentage points above the state average. And in this year, we are four percentage points above the state average, all right? In 11-12, we had four categories that we were below the state average, and now we only have two categories where we're below the state average. And in one of those categories, fifth grade math, we did close the gap significantly, all right? What's really impressive here is this last column, which is the change in percentage from the state average. Now, we don't get our ranking data yet. We won't get that till January. And ranking is how we judge, based on the strategic plan, our goal, which is to be in the top 10, okay? Typically, we're between 40 and 25 in our state rankings. But because we have state averages, and we can kind of show the distance from the state average progressing, we can assume that potentially we'll have gone up in our state rankings once we get that data. We don't know how that will, will look. That'll depend on the performance of everybody else, obviously. But in particular, you can see things like fourth grade math. We increased that distance. A year ago, we were below the state average at negative 2.4. We're now above the state average at 4.4. So we would expect our ranking to go up significantly there. You can scroll down, and you can see, in particular, eighth grade math, all right, increasing from the state average by seven and a half percentage points. And then my favorite one is Math 1, which is algebra, all right, increasing that distance from the state average by 12.7%. And so our ranking, just to give you some context, in 11-12, our ranking in Algebra 1 was number 19 in the state of North Carolina. So we've increased that distance from the state average by 12 percentage points. I'm really eager to see where we land in Algebra 1. You already know that our ACT math is ninth in the state. So we do a very good job in math, in particular in this district, something that we should be very, very proud of. So we'll get those rankings out to you in January when that, that list comes out. But this gives you a preview of some of the things I think you can expect. And again, I want to just end with, there's nothing but good news here. We do, fifth grade science, all right, we still need, we gotta work on fifth grade science. That was a little bit red. But when we talk to our teachers in particular, I want to make sure we're patting them on the back and telling them what a great job they've done with very little resources. They've worked very, very hard and deserve to be commended. Any questions or comments?
Thank you so very much, Jason. Board members, do we have any questions from, I'll start on my right. Mr. Schumaker, you have any questions to the EOC, EOG?
Yes, Dr. Van Heukleem, couple questions. In some of the individual reports we had, there were some rankings that showed us, I think it was a ranking of the LEA according to the state, like the K5 reading. Is that ranking based on the scores that you got from, from the EO, this is an EOG, this is an EOG? So that's a ranking in the state, like we were, this one here is for third grade, we were ranked 33rd in the state out of 115 districts. Is that a correct way to interpret that?
Well, let me, let me just, if you go to the left there, which says 36, that is correct. So 11-12, we were ranked 36 in the state of North Carolina in third grade reading.
Right.
The numbers in parentheses are our goals, okay? So several years ago, the board sat down and kind of mapped out a trajectory to get to the top 10 over four or five years. So they took us from, let's say, 37 in 10-11, and said, let's try to go up in rank three to five ranks per year to try to get to the top 10 in a reasonable fashion. And so 33 represents the- And so 33 represents the goal that we have. So it's not the actual rank for this year because we don't have that data yet, okay?
And, and those are the rankings that we're expecting to get at the beginning of the year.
Yes, in January.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, that's all the questions I have. It's an excellent report. I am so excited because, you know, there are two measures that we deal with, and one is proficiency and the other one is growth. But when you see growth happening, and, and the growth is really the, the children that have struggled the most have gotten farther behind, and now they have been catching up and, and are getting caught up. When you see those folks and those students really improving, you know that the proficiency is improving as well of the ones that are in the top of the class. And even though it might not show up in the, the proficiency, because we also changed that test as well.
Right.
And that's going to show up because we set a different level. But I really think it's a great, great statement as to where our teachers are pushing their chi, pushing the students, and I just appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, you have comments, questions?
Well, I mean, I agree again. I, I know that our teachers really had to work really hard with, you know, the year, just having a year to, to work on this, and I want to congratulate them for all their efforts. I know this was a real struggle. But again, it looks like that we're really, really needing to work on the reading. Seems to be our weakest area, and this is where I think we, we still need a lot of help on there because it seems like that's the only area with, that we do have the red and maybe the yellow, that we do need to work on that. And we need, I think, really to work on those areas. Seems like we are stronger in our math and our science. Am I, am I reading that right? Is that, is that where you see that, that is our weakest area? If we do have a weak area?
I would have said that last year. This year, we've grown a lot in reading. In fact, when you look at the reading for grades eight, five, six, and eight, you're going to see some blue there. Now, compared to our math, you're right. Our, our math is our strength, no doubt about it. And so if you want to put those two together, we still need to work on reading. But I'm, I'm happy to see that our reading is moving above the state average finally. And we're, especially in elementary school, we're starting to hit that blue EVAAS growth. So that's a good trajectory to have, yeah.
But we're still a little weak. I mean, we're seeing some improvement, but it seems in the
We still have room to grow, absolutely.
It seems to be in the lower grades is where our weakest part
Exactly. You're right.
And that's, but I was wondering if I was reading that right? So it's, it looks like it is in the lower grades where we need to be working on a little more. And I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. But again, I want to congratulate them again. We need to keep a positive attitude, and I want to thank the teachers for everything they put into this.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Cogger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and yes, all the hard work out there is greatly appreciated. It's, 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 you know, we're, I guess statistically speaking, we'd never have a report where we'd sit here and say, oh, well, let's just turn the lights off and go home. We're done. I mean, it's not going to happen. So we're going to keep plowing through and keep moving forward to try to make sure we make progress. So all of the good news to celebrate is there, and I, I don't want to talk about e, either the, the good or the bad. I just want to talk more philosophically. When you, when you say, well, okay, let's work on fifth grade science. What exactly does that mean as far as when, when you sit down, you sit down with Dr. Shepherd, how do we, how do we then decide, okay, what are we going to do to address the fifth grade science part?
Right. So anytime you look at, you, you identify your strengths and weaknesses across the board, and then you start to drill down into a particular area. So in this case, fifth grade science, the first thing we're going to do is look at it by school. We're going to break it down by school. We have some schools that were really, really good in fifth grade science and some schools that were not. And so we're going to find out, you know, what were some of the differences there? We've already started asking those questions, talking with principals first. Another, so that's, that's on the, with the principal side. And the other thing we do is we go and analyze our curriculum. So, you know, we have our standards, which were new, our Common Core state standards, and with science, it's North Carolina standards. We wrote new curriculum to meet those standards, and that was locally written. So we have a team of teachers that writes curriculum for fifth grade science, so they're going to dig into the curriculum documents. They're going to compare that to the test analysis and say, okay, our kids did really well in this objective, but they didn't do very well over here. And then they're going to look and see, where did we teach that? When did we teach that? And how long did we teach that? And they'll adjust the scope and sequence of the curriculum to make sure that we're hitting on the areas that we missed.
Does, when we go school by school, is there, is it possible that somehow the STEM program, when we've pulled science kids out of certain schools to all concentrate them in one, would have some sort of adverse effect on whatever the number would show? I mean, they're all still in the system as a whole, but if you go back and look at school by school, is it, is it, it's not going to show up and say, well, now this school looks weak, when in fact, eh, it's some sort of statistical analysis?
Yeah. No, there's not enough effect of that, yeah. And so we, we still have non, if you just took our STEM schools away, we've got non-STEM schools that did really, really well. In fact, the number one science performing school in our district is a non-STEM school. So.
Okay. And I think one other thing to point out that's important of what you just said was that the standard is set, and then we write the curriculum to get to the standard.
Correct.
We're not told what the curriculum is.
Absolutely.
So that's a very important distinction to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger, Mr. Walter.
Yeah, this, this is the Common Core. Is that what the, the new standard is, is the Common Core? So we could not only, I guess, see how we are in the state, but how we are nationally?
Yes.
And how, how, how we rate.
That's right.
So we'll have that information at some point?
Yeah. We will. And, um, national testing will come on next, 2014, 15, I believe. But we already have, because we have common standards, all the states are writing their local tests to those standards. So for example, we know Kentucky's performance, and we know New York's performance. And North Carolina did about the same as Kentucky as a state and, and beat New York in their performance on those, on those tests. So then we can look at ourselves individually.
And talk a little bit about that blog and video that you've created. I think that was excellent to let the public know about that.
Yeah. So I mean, just want to, and this is for you guys as well, as you're out in the public, the test scores will be publicly released this week. And quite frankly, the proficiency numbers are not going to look so great, right? You're going to see numbers in the 50s and 40s and 30s, and that's across the state. So it's important for our public to understand that we've raised the standards. We've raised the bar. And so our past performance is not going to necessarily meet that bar. And in fact, I would argue, we've done better than we've ever done in the past, and yet because the bar was raised so high, we didn't quite meet that bar in terms of proficiency. So that's why the only way to view this data is in comparison to other districts and against the state average. So I encourage the public to read past the headlines and really dig into that data. Thank you.
I think our state superintendent did an excellent job. Used a great analogy that's easily understood when she explained that, the situation to our, to our school board members a couple of months ago. She said, if you're a baseball player and you're playing in the minor leagues and you're, and you're batting 400, and then you move up to the major leagues and you're batting 200, have you done worse? Or did we just raise the standard? Is it just a higher? Now, I'm looking at Brian because Brian's a baseball player. I think we've done a lot better if you moved to the major leagues and you're, and you're batting 200. So I, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that, as you've pointed out several times, our teachers are doing an excellent job. Across the state, we're improving, even though those percentages are going down. That's because we're expecting more of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Mr. Walter, do you have anything else?
Just last, Ms. Courtney, if you want to chime in after we get through here. Appreciate your thoughts as well.
Mr. Harrison?
Again, great work on the parts of the teachers. And can you just reiterate once again for hopefully the media and the world to know how much work our teachers went to, put, to the effort this summer and spring in the Common Core local curriculum, which they, I hope I'm using the right words, but there's a great deal of misinformation out just locally concerning the Common Core curriculum. But I'll, I'll leave that to you, but my understanding is that we developed our local curriculum. It's not a national curriculum, per se, versus the, the Common Core standard. Can you just briefly address that, please?
Sure. Yeah. So it's important to remember that the state sets the standards by which we're going to judge our students' performance, and they develop tests against those standards. The curriculum is the vehicle of how we're going to teach for 180 days to get our kids ready for this assessment, for the, to meet these standards. So the curriculum here in Cabarrus County is written by our teachers. So we have more than 200 teachers involved in the curriculum writing process. We have tens of, I would say, close to 50 writing teams. Biology has a writing team, third grade math has a team, fourth grade science has a team. There's all these little teams. We bring them in over the summer for a week or two weeks. They write curriculum, and then during the school year, we tweak that curriculum and continue to receive feedback on that curriculum. But the curriculum is written by our teachers. In fact, Courtney is a member of one of our writing teams and does a great job for us.
So we can practically call it the Cabarrus Curriculum?
It is Cabarrus Curriculum.
I mean, is that, is that too much of a stretch?
No.
Thank you.
Not a stretch.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for bringing your comments. And Mr. Phillips?
It's the Cabarrus Common Core Curriculum, C4.
How many Cs is that?
See if we can get another one in there. So how much is a good teacher worth?
Priceless.
Well, according to the Economist magazine, they're worth $1.4 million each year that they teach. There was a, they did, they decided, worked by some economists who went back and they looked now that there are data like this available on the effectiveness of teachers. And they compared the average lifetime earnings of children from a class taught by an average teacher versus one that was at the bottom of the percentile ranks. And the difference in the lifetime earnings of just one class, one year's class, was $1.4 million. That's for an average teacher. You're saying that 93% of our teachers either met or exceeded the growth targets, which means that some of our teachers are adding even more than $1.4 million in future earnings for their classes, for their children that they teach each year. And that, that's phenomenal. But I guess, right, you know, we can't completely pat ourselves on the back. My question would be, what, what do we do for the 7% of the teachers that did not meet the gro, expected growth? What, what sort of programs do we have in place? I, I assume it's not immediate ejection.
No. So, you know, the schools will analyze that data in conjunction with help from my department, from my directors, elementary, middle, high school directors. We have our instructional specialists that work with those teachers. And in particular, when you look at fifth grade science, you have to assume, because fifth grade science was the red, right, for our whole district, that many of the 7% were in fifth grade science. So there, we have to kind of take a look at, at the curriculum documents and how we did science together. Instead of placing individual blame, we say, okay, something didn't happen for all of us. We've got to look at the more systematic structures with how we taught fifth grade science, analyze that really well so that we're all doing a really good job. And, and to be sure, we're going to be asking, we're going to find the couple of blue science teachers out there and say, okay, what did you do differently? You were, you used our curriculum app too. And they might say, well, I saw the curriculum app and I knew that this unit was not right, and so I just on my own did something different. And we're going to say, oh, wow, that made a lot of sense, you know? So we're going to do that investigative work and work with those teachers for sure. Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Van Heukleem, for bringing this report to us, and thank you, board members, for your good comments and questions and, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to hear my response?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you said. Courtney, you want to give us your responses, our liaison?
Well, you can share Mr. Schumaker's mic. He don't use it much.
Thank you. I think that one of the most important parts of what we do here in Cabarrus County, one of the most exciting parts, is that teachers are really a part of the process, a huge part of the process. And that's one of the most exciting pieces for us, is we were a part of developing our curriculum, our local curriculum, and now we're a part of the tweaking. We've gotten these results back, and now we're a part of seeing where, where our weaknesses are and where our strengths are, and we're the ones going back in and fixing some of that. And that's not an opportunity that I think all teachers have, and I think we're all really excited to be a part of actually making a, of being a part of this solution, not just sitting and waiting. We're here doing the work, and that's something that everyone's really excited about. And, you know, we're doing things tomorrow even. We're, you know, in response to your, what we do for our teachers who maybe aren't in the right place. Tomorrow, we're all going to PD where we're having what's effectively a, a state, I mean, it's just like any kind of curriculum fair that you would go to that was put on by an enormous foundation or any kind of state representation. We actually are having one just for Cabarrus County School teachers that is put on by Cabarrus County School teachers. We have the experts in our field that will be teaching other teachers how to do things. And it's a really neat experience for all of us, and we're all very excited about what we get to do.
Well, Courtney, I appreciate your comments and your encouragement, you know, for what we're doing. You know, it's obvious that we are doing a lot of things right, and, you know, even though we're lacking a little bit, but when you look at, we had 17 particular items that we had, 10 of those we exceeded the state, and some of, some of those 10s was by a normal, I mean, enormous numbers we exceeded, 14% in one case, I believe it was. And then you look at six where we met the state, and only one. So one out of 17 that we failed in, and we can work on that. We got 16 out of 17 right, so we can get that other one. I thank you, Dr. Van Heukleem. Okay, board members, now that we've got two of our other cabinet members here, I'd like to ask Ms. Klutz to come to the podium, and we'll back up to 3.1 and do the QSCB financial update. And we're glad to have you with us. Thank you, Kelly.
Good afternoon. Again, we are closing down our QSCB projects. We have very little left in our balance. I'll just call your attention to a couple of the items. In the contingency for open projects for the Northwest Gym Edition, there's $25,000 available in that contingency. We were made aware by the county, Ms. Pam Dubois, that there is $83,000 approximately of sales tax refund that they were going to apply to reduction of the debt. Now, those dollars will be made available to us. We can, they will apply that. We've made a request to apply that to that particular project too, so that will increase that line item up to the, it'll be $83,000 plus the $25,000. We've given you some indication that we would like to spend those dollars on paving that pro, paving that parking lot because of the, the construction damage when we were working on that project. In addition, there's just a little, little dollars left, and little dollars, they're all dollars, left in various projects. So some various schools' breaker panels, there's $5,334 left in that project. In addition, in the Central Cabarrus replacement windows and doors, there's $7,199 left in that project. We're wanting to wrap all of those up and spend all of those. And next month, we're going to ask you in a, in the form of a budget amendment, to move those into the Mount Pleasant High School Bowler Project because we're going to ask to put those in the, in the controls area for those HVAC projects. The, in addition, there's $12,794 in the contingency for the weight room at Concord High School. We're not going to ask you to move those dollars. We're going to ask to spend those dollars on equipment for Concord High School in that project. And so those are just things, we're not asking you to take action on those. We're just asking, just informing you of what's, what we're trying to do to wrap this, these projects up.
I'm assuming, Ms. Klutz, you talked about equipment, like weights and benches and all of those type things for the, the Concord High Gym Edition there?
Right. The Concord Weight Room Edition, yes.
Right, the weight room, yes.
And to qualify for the QSCB funding, it has to be directly related to that project.
So that, that's a perfect fit there, you know, doubt. And, you know, I think it's an excellent plan, what you have outlined. Board members, we'll start on my left. If you have questions, we'll make them, otherwise we'll move right along to my right. Mr. Phillips? Mr. Harrison?
Just a general question, just comes to mind, for the Concord High School Weight Room and amount, just hypothetically, could those funds be spent toward sports medicine rehabilitation types of programs or equipment? Or do you literally mean more weight room type of equipment? I'm talking about something like sports medicine probably is a hot topic for young people to get interested in and find their career paths in. And I'm just wondering if, in this case, or cases like it in the future, do we mean literally just the weight equipment or, in a broader sense, equipment that could be coordinated with career path types of programs? That's just a hypothetical question. I don't mean in this, literally in this case.
QSCB, see, QSCB funding is very strict in what we can spend it on. And the scope of the project is weight room specific. So certainly, we could, we could ask for detailed and clarification on that. But my guess is, because it says weight room and we generally don't get to send it...
You don't deviate from that.
For equipment or furniture unless it's specifically and exactly to the scope. My thought would be no, but we could certainly ask.
Again, only if it's, you know, practical or feasible to get that kind of clarification. I don't need to ask any additional effort on that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Just didn't notice any change in the J.M. Freeze project, does it?
Right. And Mr. Wickie, did just do an update with the commissioners. Would you like to address that? I'll let him address it.
We're waiting, the contractor that was assigned that work, because we were kind of delayed in terms of when we made decisions, he moved on to other projects. So he's wrapping those projects up, hopes to get started this week or early next week on the roofing at J.M. Freeze. And it won't take him that long. He's a very fast worker. And matter of fact, he's the one, he's the firm that did the roof on Central High School and the weight room and was very timely in its replacement and getting that done when we needed it. So we have worked with him many times and he'll come through for this project.
I noticed that on the J.M. Freeze, it seemed like from month to month, and even up until this report here, that the contractor seemed as like the supplies will be on site by a certain day. That date comes and goes. Then they say they'll be on site by another day. Those dates come and go. So this is about the fourth or fifth time. So I'm assuming the reason for that is like what you just said, he moved other projects in front of this one to get them done until whatever become available become available, I guess, the supplies. So he couldn't sit around wait weeks after weeks after weeks for our supplies to get there and hold off other jobs. So that's very easily understood, you know?
Yeah.
And so, but you may cover a little more detail when we do the milestones, which we'll do next. Okay, but can we have any other questions on this side?
Just real quick, I want to make sure I understood, Kelly, what you said. Next month, you're going to give us the full, here's what's left and here's where we want it to go? So we don't need to comment on any of that tonight.
Well, we're hoping to get your comments because I want to bring you a budget amendment next month and I want you to approve it. So we want to be ready to go.
Well, we'll do that at the business meeting, right? We can have comments at the work session?
Yeah, you can have comments at the work session. But I'm hoping not to have any changes once I present a budget amendment to you. I'd like to know, if you have any concerns or questions, we'd like to know at this point.
Well, we have a construction subcommittee meeting between now and then. Will we have that at that meeting? Okay. Well, I will feel free to make all kinds of comments then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker?
Well, let me just see if my arithmetic, you know, Cabarrus County's really strong in math. I don't know if I'm as strong as our system. But basically, you said you're looking at this $12,000 to be used for weight equipment, or almost 13. Are there any vocational needs in that building that we just constructed? Because that vocational building is for the fire safety folks and what they do. And I want to make sure that we don't leave them high and dry or short on whatever they need, but to make sure that that program is, has got all the components that it needs in it before we start investing in athletic equipment, if you know what I mean. That's my first question.
That's a good question. I think at this point, I had some communication by email with the principal and she indicated interest in this. But at the same time, she was saying, you know, we talked originally about painting, fixing up that remaining space, the old weight room, for other reasons, including the Fire Academy. So we really need to have a meeting with her to iron that out. We're just saying those funds will be spent on that project. It will either be weight equipment or it will be in the old building, so.
I think that's a much wiser answer. I didn't particularly care for the, by weight equipment, especially when I know that there's a CTE program that's, that probably needs this, needs other stuff or other fixtures to help them out.
To be honest with you, the 12,000 won't do either extremely well, but we'll spend it as wisely as we can to get both programs to where they need to be.
Good. My second question is, based on that, my arithmetic shows us there's about $120,000 left that, based on just what you added up here, it looks with the 83,000 that you said, Pam?
Oh.
Yeah, along with the 83,000 from the sales tax. So I'm ahead of you. So that you'll be coming to us with some type of budget amendment that'll probably be in that range? Is that what I'm to understand?
It's not necessary to provide a budget amendment. What happens, and this is unique, we don't normally have this. What happens is it's essentially a refund that goes in to, so you have an expense of a million dollars in the Northwest Gym and you're putting a refund into that account of 83,000. And so that just makes funds available for you to spend. We're not increasing the budget, therefore, and we're not changing the budget, we're not moving the budget, therefore, we don't need to amend the budget. So that's why we're talking to you about it, we're making you aware, but there's no reason to amend the budget.
So what you'll be coming to us with in December would just be a reallocation of funds for QSCAB projects? And then we'll be looking to put some projects, to associate some projects with the remaining funds so that we can spend the money as...
There's no reallocation of the funding. It's just a, just think of it as a check, a refund check. So if, it's actually a check that comes back from North Carolina Department of Revenue. So there's a, we pay a million dollars out to a vendor, assuming, just take, for instance, the vendor gives us a credit, an 83,000 credit. So now that money is available. So there's no reallocation, there's no budget amendment, it's just now those funds are available. We're paying the vendor less or we're paying that project less. So now those funds are available and free for us to spend.
Yes, so those funds will be available along with the extraneous funds on this list and we'll lump them all together and be able to invest in another project of some sort.
This project, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Klutz, for the report. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Mr. Wickie's part on the milestone. I think it's 3.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I did want to just clarify, when I was talking with Kelly, we did speak of the weight equipment as being sort of a primary issue because at Concord, their equipment is quite dated, some of it is beyond repair. And so it will be, as I said, difficult to fund both. There won't be enough money to do either completely, but we'll figure out a way to make the existing facility reusable and help with the weight equipment replacement. And that is all acceptable under the guiding lines, guidelines, rather, of the QSCB program. To take you to windows and doors, which is the first item on the milestones, we are done. We got the very last receipt, if you will, or invoice, if you will, from our subcontractors who are doing the work for us. So now we will settle out with the bonding company and finalize a payment to the general contractor who failed to do his final work. And we will be complete on that project, hopefully as of next month. With the gym edition, as we said, the work for the building is, for all intents and purposes, complete. We're occupying the structure. Contractors got some minor things that they're taking care of in terms of punchless items, but we're in the building and we're using it every day. The real crux of the issue is that we've had a horrific time with that existing parking lot. Every time you turned around, something else turned up. We had, we had literally about an inch and a half of paving on top of dirt. That's what you have for a parking lot throughout the whole area. And some of that dirt, as I explained to the commissioners, wasn't even good dirt. Some of it was powder. You literally, there was one area where we went down probably about three feet before we could find anything of substance. As a matter of fact, we ended up having to put a membrane in just to support the rock we put on top of it. So with that in mind, we've asked to use whatever funds are available, both in the project as well as this additional money coming back from the state sales tax program so that we can do more work to repair the damaged areas in front of the gymnasium and put a new finish coat of asphalt on the rock that's out there right now. So we will have a complete and good-looking parking lot in front of the gymnasium when we're done. And that work will continue, you know, as soon as we can get the contractor involved again. He moved on to other projects, but he's coming back for this work, so. The boiler replacement at Mount Pleasant, as Kelly mentioned, we are done with that. The 65% at the time was correct. We were waiting for stacks to be delivered. They were delivered, they were installed last week. The boilers are fully operational. So I'm calling them 95% complete. And the reason that is the case, we have money in the project to replace one of the control panels. There's a total of three that are bad. They're no longer repairable, there's no parts available for them. So we're going to do a change order to replace the one unit. And we have a proposal for replacing the other two. And that's what we'll be, you know, suggesting to the committee that we reuse the money, use the money that's available in that project for that purpose, is to buy the other two control panels. And so we'll spend that money down and we may, we do need a little bit more money from one of the other surplus funds. And we'll share that information with the committee next week and present it to you in December. The Concord High Gym Edition, that is complete, except for the landscaping. That's the only work that remains to be done, a little bit of lighting. But I think the lighting even now is done and landscaping remains, just due to, originally it was taken out of the project, we put it back in because we had enough money and contingency to do that. So we'll be done, hopefully, in about two weeks with that. And as we said, we'll be spending the remainder of the money in both the existing or the old weight room as well as for some new equipment. And the partial roof replacement at J.M. Freeze, I think he's, I believe what I heard from him last week was that he does have all the materials in place and he's just now gathering his forces to begin work on our project. And other than that, we don't have anything to talk about in the way of projects. So that's a good thing. And I hope come December, we'll have a way of spending all the dollars and basically closing out everything by the end of the year, hopefully.
Yeah, that'll be a good thing because it's been a long time coming. There's no doubt about it. Board members, do you have any comments or questions about the milestone report? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Wickie, for being here.
Thank you.
And appreciate all the hard work you do on all this.
Absolutely.
Okay, board members, we'll move along now to our, the 4.0 section of the agenda tonight. This is where we have our items for discussion, where we'll either have a consensus from the board members to either go to the consent agenda on our business meeting, or if the board elects, we can put it on the action agenda where we'll vote on it individually. Our first item here is 4.1, is budget amendments. And we got Ms. Klutz at the podium. So when you're ready, we're ready.
Good afternoon, one more time. I have only two budget amendments for you today. When we, this is a grant that we received from the state and it's PRC O29. It's called Behavioral Support. And we request these funds specifically for a very specific, unique group of children. We were requesting an expansion of the grant so that we could hire additional staff. The state was unable to give us the additional funds. But when we request the grant, everything has to tie in. So the budget was adopted with this amount. We do not hire the staff until we know that we received the grant. We did not receive the additional funds for the grant, so now we're adjusting the budget down. So nothing ventured, nothing gained. It's just an accounting adjustment to get our books in line. So we didn't get, we didn't receive the money and we didn't hire anyone. Okay?
Well, that almost zeros it out then, don't it?
It does, zero it out, exactly.
All right. Board members, do you have any comments or concerns about the budget amendments? We'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side. Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Kiger? Mr. Walter? Mr. Harrison?
Nothing.
And Mr. Phillips? Okay, so I'm assuming by no comment, everybody all good for the consent agenda for the business meeting, is that right? Okay.
The federal one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. Well, at least the state part's done, so let's move on to the other part there. Ms. Klutz?
Thank you. So with the federal, there's just two small adjustments and we're doing reclasses, just moving those around. One, with our Title II funds, there's just some new regulations. We budgeted the funds with the intention of doing the same thing we did in the previous year. And then they told us we can't, we can't spend those dollars on those expenses, so we reclassed it so that we could spend it somewhere else. And then with the second Title I, we're doing a reclass of those funds, too.
Okay, board members, any questions, comments? On my left, on my right? None? Okay, everybody's good for the consent agenda?
Okay. And then the final is where we talked earlier about, sorry, we're both moving, the $83,000 for the QSCB sales tax refund. As I said before, it's not a budget amendment because we're not, we're not increasing our budget, we're not reallocating our budget. But I did want you to be aware of it and the recommendation staff is to put the funds into the parking lot at the Northwest. So that's, we, full disclosure is why this document is here for you.
And I thank you for that, Ms. Klutz, also because that's something that I'm real picky about, is full disclosure. I want to make sure that those that send the no have the no, you know, and that's what we want to, you know, do. But are there any discussion on this?
Just a quick clarification. You said earlier that that money had to be used for the Northwest project or it does not necessarily have to be?
So not necessarily. It has to be used for a QSCB project. But as we talked with the bond council, the county's bond council, there were certain projects that they would prefer that they be used for. And they guided us in that direction. And they were very comfortable with that particular project and that, the paving of that. And they wanted us to use it on one particular project and not spread over various projects. So our administration was comfortable doing that, the county was comfortable, and we were, we felt like that was a good place for it. There was a need there in addition.
Well, that was just newfound money, you know? We had already spent the money and basically we're just getting it back. And that's why there wasn't no need for a budget amendment, as you've already said, because we done spent it, we just getting it back. Now we're just going to reuse it for something that needs to be done there. Mr. Kiger, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do we anticipate any other sales tax refunds from the rest of the projects that we've done?
So what was happening before is they were taking any of the sales tax refund that we were getting and they were holding it into a separate account and going to use it. The intent was to use it to reduce their bond debt. Now, since they became aware that they could not do that, now they reduce the project. So if we're paying a contractor $10,000, we get immediate credit for that. So now we know where we have those funds available and we can spend them immediately. So it's just a reduction immediately of the cost of that project. So for instance, so when we were to spend the roofing dollars, the J.M. Freeze roofing, there will be a portion of that that will be sales tax. So that'll go right back into that line item, whereas before it was going over into a sales tax line item.
Okay. So if it goes right back into the line item, it's going to show up then in the list that we're going to talk about that you guys, for next month?
Correct, yes.
It's just, it's just changing the total at the end of the...
It does.
Okay, I'm with you. So we're accounting for it correctly now, or more importantly, they are accounting for it correctly now, is that right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Schumaker?
Okay.
Everybody good with appropriating this money, well, to the paving project at Northwest? Everybody okay with that? Okay, Ms. Klutz, you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, let's move right along to our next item here. And that is, we've got Mr. Kevin Bryant and Kelly also back again for the Central Cabarrus High School turf project. And so you guys get ready, just come on and we're here waiting on you.
Which one do I, I need the second one. Good afternoon again. Kevin Bryant and I are going to talk about the Central Cabarrus High School turf project that we talked with you about in, I believe it was September, is that accurate? We are not going to review the entire PowerPoint presentation that we reviewed before, although it's here in case you have questions or concerns, we can talk about it. it's here in case you have questions or concerns, we can talk about it. Kevin and I were just at the commissioners' meeting and we made a request for $265,000 from the county commissioners to finish off the project. This is an $800,000 project cost. He has, there's $440,000 of grants that we have secured for this project. Carreras County Schools has committed $95,000 to this project. And we have requested, are requesting, assuming that you are okay with that, $265,000 from the county commissioners. Now, part of that would be $67,000 that we returned to the county from an escrow account. So, it's either the balance of that or the whole. So, 265,000 is the total of the amount that we're requesting from the county. And we want to make sure that you are comfortable with that request after the presentation. If you have any questions or concerns about funding or the project.
Thank you, Ms. Clutz. You know, like you said, we've talked about it a couple of times and there's not really much more that we can say. It's really in the commissioners' court because I'm assuming that this board will agree with what you've already done because, you know, if the commissioners decide they don't want to do it, well, we just keep our 65,000 and Central will keep the 30 that we gave them a couple of months ago. And then they can carry on with whatever projects they want to do. And then we can appropriate the 65 however we want to because that's already in our coffers already. So, board members, if you have any other comments or questions, you know, you know what our, what our situation is, is we're wanting to get consent to put this on our business meeting next week that we approve appropriating the 65,000 that we have left, asking the commissioners to give us the remaining 265,000 to go along with all the other funds that are available there, the grant. And I believe that Central wanted to use the 30,000 that we gave them to go along with that, too. I do, I have to be perfectly honest with you on this. I do see just a little bit of friction there from my point of view because when we gave that 30,000 to the, to the Central Carreras School, we were hoping that you would fix some of these problems and complaints that you had. And so, but now, as I look at this, and I'll say what I got to say then, wouldn't let the board say what they want to. But I can see though where, and board members, you know that if you studied this and looked at it, whereas Central is currently spending $43,000 a year to keep their existing field playable. If we take that away and put turf there, then the turf upkeep is only $2,000 a year. So, that extra 41,000 can go towards some of these. So, basically what you're doing is you're trading 30 for 41.
Correct. That and then the sponsorship revenue that we believe we could get from this type of project. We believe that the increased sponsorship, the increased field usage, some of those things would bring in revenue that would far outweigh what that 30,000 would be.
I agree with you, Kevin. I agree with you. When you look at it like that, you know, we're going to have to spend a little. And I'm very much in favor of it and I have been all along, but I want to let, give the board an opportunity to say what they want to say and then we'll move forward. But like I say, I feel real good about this. So, I just asked in general, do I have any comments or questions on my left? Mr. Phillips?
The obvious question is how is this received at the county commissioners' meeting this evening?
Let me be very careful about this. I think it was received very well, better than I anticipated, to be honest with you. I think they were very receptive about it. They're very interested in the return on investment. And I believe that as a result of that, we have a couple of things that, one of the things that they brought up was what our, well, actually I proposed it to them and then they brought another part to it, which is if we go above, say the project cost ends up going above that $360,000, who's going to pay the surplus? And what I told them is I would take a vote at my next Booster Club meeting that if need be, we would take whatever funds we have and put it towards the project if there's, if it goes over that 360,000. They did ask that above that, that if it's possible to get a letter from the school board stating that if the project then went above the Booster Club and what they have, would the school board be willing to foot the bill above that? And I told them I would request that. My answer to them is I'm very confident that that $360,000 based on the grant, based on speaking to the individual who writes the grant, that that would cover the cost of the surface. But they did request that we, one, got a letter from the Booster Club stating they would cover as much as it could of the remaining, then if there was still a remaining balance there, that the school board would cover that. And so, that's something I kind of knew that I'd bring straight from their meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Phillips, anything?
The other thing I was just going to mention is in addition to bringing in additional revenue, this is a safety issue, as you showed to me when we went on the tour. Because of drainage problems, the existing field is actually shifted towards the visitor stands by what, a couple of yards?
Yeah, about five to 10 yards towards the visitor sideline, correct.
And so, therefore, the amount of space that's available from the sideline to the stands on the visitor's side is way, way below what it should be. And so, you know, it's only a matter of time if we continue to use that field, there's going to be a serious injury.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other comments? Mr. Harrison?
It's a great plan. I'm very grateful that you brought it to us and shepherded it so far as you have. I would ask please, bad pun just now to say shepherd, but on page three, can we please spell our superintendent's name correctly?
Oh, we fixed that. We have fixed that.
As he would suggest, word my name in something, but yes, please. It's a great plan. We appreciate all the hard work that everyone has put into the plan and your presentation to the commission. Thank you.
I'll have to buy you dinner, Dr. Shepherd, as a resolution for that. I know we fixed it on, there was a typo on the board of commissioners and we fixed that. And I think it got overlooked on the, on the three-page thing that we have for you tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, also supportive of it. I think it's great, the safety aspect, number of things, and the fact that we're getting this at less than half of the normal price of a turf field. And I guess there's an option for another one of these fields for, I'd like to see if it's possible somehow we can work out a way to get another one of our schools have a turf field as well. My only question to you, again, is we had your discussion last time was with the issues with the ADA compliance of bathrooms and all that. What is the plan to handle that?
The plan would be to, the amount of monies that we save on a yearly basis doing field maintenance, we would then put those, towards those projects. In addition, we firmly believe that we can raise, I think we can double our sponsorship dollars that we currently get based on the fact that you're going to have, you know, much more traffic coming into that stadium. You can attract, whether it be state sponsors, national sponsors, that you couldn't otherwise attract in addition to local businesses. It's, again, my belief when you look just purely from a marketing standpoint, that these businesses are going to be willing to spend a lot more to advertise on a field that has so much more traffic.
But if you have an ADA compliance issue, can they come out? Are they able to come out, those groups?
And that, you know, that's something now, when we host groups, they, you know, they do rent the field and that's part of our facility use. So, the limited amount of use we're allowed to give it on outside vendors, right now they do have to deal with those, those issues. Obviously, it would be our goal to be, make that one of the first things we fix, you know, when you're talking about not being able to get a wheelchair into the stadium, which, which you really can't right now when you look at the gravel and some of those things. I mean, that would be one of the first things that we try to fundraise for. And I think we could do that very quickly, to be honest with you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you were a spelling teacher, I'd worry about the typo. But since you're the athletic director, I think we can probably let that fly. I'm, I am definitely in favor of writing the letter or sending the letter to the commissioners and making the request. I think it's certainly, I was willing, when we thought the number was bigger before, I wanted to put it to the project. Now, I wish we still had that. We don't. But at least, you know, if we can put this toward the project and get it done, then more power to you. I guess initially it was a little concerning. I just hated to have you have to spend your 30 on this because I really wanted that to go to the other things that you were doing. But at the end of the day, if that's what you guys are deciding to do, then that's really better than us telling you what to do. So, I mean, you've made a decision as you look out over what you have to be responsible for and how you're going to take care of those things. And if you think that's the best thing to do with it, then, then, you know, put it in the pot and hopefully the project gets done. So, I'm okay with sending the letter and I hope we get to, after all the hard work that you've put in, I hope you get to do the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, again, my concerns are still the safety issues. And that was the thing that I emailed someone today to find out if these safety issues had been addressed, the bleachers, the restrooms, the paving. And if I can be assured, these things will be addressed because I don't want, three months from now, after we've said, oh, we're going to do this, for my room to be filled out here and parents from Central saying, well, you haven't did anything and you just did a turf field. Why have these things not been fixed? So, I would like if this is done for there be some, something saying, well, you know, this is going to be addressed if we go with this. Now, for us to do a letter saying we're going to pick up the other part of the tab, I don't know where this money would come from. Kelly, you're our person. Are you willing to step up and say, yeah, we're going to pick up this remainder balance? Where we're going to get this from?
I think with any project, we need to be confident in the cost and not exceed that cost. And I think, I don't, I don't hear Mr. Bryant have any concern about the cost and exceeding the cost of the project, so.
I mean, we don't have the money. You've told me you don't have the money for me to put TAs anywhere. You won't give me the $200,000 that, you know, we don't have it. I don't have it to give him, I don't have it for teacher assistance. I definitely don't have it for turf on the field.
I think we can firm up the numbers. I think the numbers are firm. I think we firm up the numbers and we hold them accountable.
Because I don't have it. I mean, I would rather put a teacher in a classroom. I'm sorry, you know. I really, you know, I have to think of my students. And so, that's, you know, that's, that's where, but, you know, if we can get this, it seems like it's a good thing. And if you're willing to make sure we address these safety issues, then I'll go behind it. But the other part, you know, on the other hand, you're telling me we don't have money to do this other thing. I've got to make sure that we cover all our bases. And if those bases are covered, then I'll go with these other guys, you know, they say it's okay. But I want to make sure those safety issues are addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
And if I could, we, you know, those issues that exist right now, we would be able to accomplish fixing those a lot quicker with this project because it would allow us, again, that 41,000 that we're saving on an annual basis, those would be the first things that we would address would be the safety things. And then from there, we would start looking at, you know, some other projects, but.
Mr. Schumaker.
Last but not least. All right, so, we have a drainage issue out there. Is the, in the 360,000, is there enough money to accomplish rerouting and redoing your drainage?
There is. That, basically, the cost of the turf is $260,000. The cost of grading, putting down the stone, is estimated at under $100,000. I mean, we could come in under that number. So, that would fix all the grading issues. That would fix the drainage issues. All of that would be included in that lump sum of $360,000. And what the, what the grant actually does is it pays for the turf. It pays for the legwork. And then you go out and you contract through an independent contractor, the actual laying of the pebbles and some of those sorts of things, so.
And who will, who will be executing the contract with whomever it is? Is that going to be something that Mr. Wickie's group will be taking care of or how will that work?
I'm not sure of that. Mr. Wickie, could you speak to that? I mean, would, the grant would suggest that we go out and get independent bids on, on that project from contractors. I'm not sure if that would be done at the county level or at the school level, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
You know, we, I will say, first of all, there's an engineering firm, you know, that's engaged and involved in doing the early preliminary design work. They, I'm assuming, will ultimately do the construction documents for bidding purposes. It depends on how the county wishes to handle this. Normally, we would be the office responsible for putting out the bid. Certainly, we will be involved in coordinating it with the school and with our office. If the, because we have that relationship with the county, in some cases, they will, they will choose to be the oversight group for bidding the work. They're doing that with the Raging Ridge Road Extension as an example. It depends a little bit on who feels the most comfortable in doing this. And, but in any event, we will be involved as will, I'm sure, some of the county folks as well. But it will, I would think unless handled, you know, in a unique circumstance, we would handle this as a standard bidding process, so.
Thank you. All right, I have one more comment. Based on your 41,000, you also have a lot of in-kind labor going into your project. And, you know, we've talked about it and batted the numbers around and I guess it's a couple thousand hours a year, which is at least one person's pay for a year, which is in-kind being donated. So, that would definitely bring some value to this because you could use that pay, you know, that time and use that to coordinate and do other things that are probably needed to be, that need to be done in your athletic area.
I think this, some of the unsaid things that go in your ROI that haven't really been talked about is the hotel rooms. We know that there's some potentials there and it'd be great if Michael Applegate and his group at the CVB could help us kind of track the performance of this and how this is really making a payback so we can, in future projects, talk to our commissioners and actually have some, some evidence that, you know, we did these things. The fact that your venue can be opened up not only for athletic events but for other types of events that need a big field, say, big band events or things like that, is going to be a huge boon to this community. And I applaud you guys for doing all the legwork and the effort that you've done. And I know you've been like a bulldog trying to get this thing through. And I'm really in support of it and I think there's a lot of value in here that the fact that we have a collaboration between all these different governmental entities and that's, that's what it's all about. So, thank you again for spearheading this.
It's not a bulldog, it's a Viking.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Kiger, you had additional comments?
Just, just, I want to go back to the potential cost overrun. If, and this maybe will help you just at least get a comfort level. If my memory is correct, when we got the presentation, that in the field turf portion itself, they have money allocated for grading. And then we've got this other section where we've got storm drainages and box, whatever. And we all sat at the table and said, we don't think we're going to have to spend both sides of the grading, that it actually should be less. Of course, there's a lot of projects you go into, you think it's going to be less and it never is. But the, well, I should say, it's not never. Bad word there. But, but am I remembering that correctly, that there's some grading money that we really don't think we're going to have to spend because of the situation that you have?
That is correct. And talking to the architect and, actually, at the last race, spoke with Kendall Buckley, who's over the grant, who's part of Soccer Ministries International. And it's both of their understanding that they'd be very surprised if we even hit that 360,000 number. Now, like you said, it's all speculative and things can change, but because there's an existing field there. Now, one of the big questions that came up at the board of commissioners' meeting tonight was that fence that exists on the visitor's sideline. Currently, it's about four feet above field level. You know, if we were to raise that field up, how much more is that going to cost? Again, speaking with architects and speaking with the individuals writing the grant, they believe that they can raise the field level up quite a bit at a very minimal cost. They don't think that that's going to make it an overrun by any stretch, so.
I thought that's what we had discussed. And the other thing was, did you talk about a timetable with the commissioners? Is it going to be on their business agenda, meeting agenda? Okay. And then if, if that gets approved, what's your timeframe on getting, getting started?
It could be as early as, you know, if they approve it, it could be as early as December. Basically, the group that we're working with gets two grants a year. So, they're allowed to allocate two grants in 2013, two grants in 2014. The Frank List project is on the table and actually the CVB is probably discussing that right now with, with the board of commissioners. And they're looking at putting two turf fields over there. So, the timing of this could coincide with that where we actually, you know, might do our project as the field in 2013 and then those two in 2014. Or it could be they start their project and then start our project. But either way, we would have those grants secure. have those grants secure. We, we could have up to four grants in the next, you know, year and two months since we're in November, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The fourth week of the state playoffs will be at home, right? And so, after that game, the state championship's somewhere else, right? It's at one of the universities. So, will we clear to go by, what, second or third week in December?
I'd like to think we'll be playing into December, but...
At, at home.
That's putting, that's putting, yeah, I don't know about at home, but I'd like to definitely think we'll be playing.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I, I, as we were talking, I just had one more question here. That was, you know, we need to know, in the event, unlikely event, and it does come in under what we expect, who is the entity that's gonna get the refund? Ms. Klutz?
Well, what, well, well, I, I don't care who answers it. I just wanna know, you know, I mean, it's, whose hands is gonna be out looking for the refund? Whereas, on the tax refund, that obviously went to the county, you know. And so, in this situation, since they're putting in, if they put it in, 265, are they gonna say, "Well, since y'all got it cheaper, I want my $20,000 or $30,000 back"? Or, the central gonna say, "Well, you know, I threw my 30 in, and I need to do, do this and this, and I'd like to have my 30 back," or some of it back. And then, we're gonna say, "Well, we put 65 in, we get some of ours back." So, we need to have a little bit of clarity where the refund goes in the event, which is really truly unlikely. But if it is, who gets it?
It appears everyone has the same concern about the stadium, about the safety concerns, all entities that are involved in this. And it seems to be, the breeze, the, the most reasonable solution is to put it back, invest it back into this stadium, although, I'm, I'm, I'm playing with you.
Well, I was sort of, I, I didn't doubt that you wouldn't say that, you know, because she likes to buy that money.
I like to take the money.
She cats that money, boy, and she hangs on to it. So, I'm, I'm good with everything. Board members, that we wanna go on with the consent agenda. Everybody okay with that? Or, nobody on the action? Okay. Carolyn, you good?
I'm good.
All right.
I just wanna make sure those, y'all know, I just wanna make sure the safety issues are real.
Absolutely. And I'm sure that, that is...
That's where I, that's, that's where my concern is.
Well, you can see where, that the savings, you know, as soon as this gets done, and they're using it, and they start, stop spending all this money on the, the grass that they're spending it on now, those monies, little by little, can be used to, to address these issues. And, and so, I'm sure that will be taken care of. So, so we've got this on the consent agenda for our business meeting, and so, you guys are good to go. And just hope that the commissioners will see it the way we see it, and then you'll for sure be ready to get started. Okay?
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, can I just generally ask? I'm delighted that all these stars are lining up just right, and that we feel it's gonna be a successful project. But with so many moving pieces, can we get some of these figures and assumptions in more tabular or accounting type of format that we can at least understand the sources of revenue and the direction we're trying to spend them in? Even if it's just informational, it could still be only consent agenda. But I do mean to see the numbers in a more table type of format.
Surely, I understand that.
I hope it's not asking too much.
That could even be on a Friday report, as far as I'm concerned, you know.
Sure. And, and to Mr. Schumaker's question about the contract, that, we're gonna have to, probably gonna have to talk with Mark a little bit. Generally, those contracts will come through, through us, and the bidding is gonna be a little bit different than what we're used to, and that there are a lot of moving pieces. So, Mark and I probably need to get together and, and give you a summary on that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Klutz. Thank you also, Adam, for being here. Yep, Kevin. All right, Chris, you ready to come up and talk to us about the calendar revisions?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I hope the calendar revisions are pretty simple. You do have an updated one. I know Mr. Walters was saying one of the last ones had too much, some corrections on it. He was right, it was a little confusing. So, if you'll look at that, there are several things to fix. Let me direct your attention down to graduation. The old calendar had graduation listed as June 12th, 13th, and 14th. Dr. Sane actually submitted these calendars. And when she submitted that, the P L C was graduating on a Thursday. They're not doing that anymore. So, now, all schools will graduate on the 13th and 14th. So, that's one little minor change, just to go from 12th, 13th, and 14th to just 13th and 14th. And then, the other two changes are because of the exam schedule and the makeup schedule, which is pretty much mandated by the state. So, if you'll look in the January calendar, the 13th should be red. What the calendar now says is that we had a full day on the 13th, and then half-days at high school on 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th. That did not provide a way to do makeup, which is now mandated in a shorter amount of time based on the new law changes. So, they just flipped that to say, "Let's do exams Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday." The Friday will be a full day of school, because they'll have to do all their makeups on that day. So, it's not necessarily a day where everybody is gonna come to school on that full day, but the people that have to do makeups, we have to get that in. And so, the same thing would take place second semester, if you dump down, jump down to June. Currently, we were going to have exams on 5th, 6th, 9th, and 10th, which would be the last day. And you just bump that up, so you have high school exams on 4th, 5th, 6th, 9th. And then, the 10th will be the last day of school, which is a half-day for everybody. But in essence, means five half-days, the last one is used for makeup. So, honestly, one is to drop the P L C on that Thursday. It's gonna graduate on Friday with the other schools. And the other two is just to give us a day to do makeup exams, because all that is mandated by the new law changes.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Schumaker?
No comment.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger. Mr. Walter, you are liaison for calendar. Are you okay? All right, Mr. Harrison?
I read the graduation, June 13th and 14th. To me, that you're giving us plenty of heads-up, that we will shake about 900 hands on the 13th, and then another 900 hands on the 14th. So, just rest up and be...
It's a few more on the 14th, but it's close.
And, and plan our schedules accordingly.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips? Okay, board members, I'm assuming by that, everybody's...
I'm sorry, one quick comment. The worst thing in the world on a long meeting night is to think of something after the fact. But did, so, the P L C, they, they decided to scrap, they're not gonna do their dinner thing and do the...
They did in this past year, just because of the way they changed it. And so, now, they're kinda just fitting into that category, which they did at the arena this past year anyway. And so, they're right in there with everybody else.
Yeah, I couldn't remember exactly what, what, what they had done last year. So, okay, so that's, they're just doing to do next year exactly what they did last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Lauter, to go to the consent agenda on our business meeting. And you just might as well go ahead and stay there, 'cause you're gonna do your policy revisions on the first reading. And, uh, board members, I just wanted to give you advisement here that, you know, most of these changes that Dr. Lauter's gonna be speaking about are, matter of fact, all of them are legislative updates, and the revisions will comply with the legislation. And so, Dr. Lauter, you can go ahead, if you will.
There are 12 policy changes. And as Mr. Schu just said, they're essentially updates from the law and the State School Board Association. We did go over these at our policy committee. Mr. Harrison was not at that meeting, but Ms. Carpenter was. And so, again, we've gone through. We also sent you a summary of what those changes were when we sent out the board policies. So, if, again, we'll answer questions about any of the policies you have questions about.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Mr. Phillips?
Right, I just noticed that on one of them, it says replacement, and that is, oh, now, just jumped off there, student searches. So, could you maybe summarize what we're replacing?
Yeah, I think, and I know Mr. Harrison actually sent an email, too, to ask about why there wasn't, usually when there are policy changes, it's in red. And there were, this whole policy was rewritten by the State School Board Association. So, you couldn't do it in red. They basically just reformatted the whole thing. And I'll try to read to you what the, a little bit of the summary is, and we'll try to answer a question. This policy's been revised and reorganized to clarify the standards for searching students and to provide additional guidance. Because the revisions are extensive, and the policy is difficult to read in strikeout form, we're just gonna rewrite the whole thing. And ultimately, it's to align with Supreme Court rulings and, and updates on student searches as, as it relates to the law. I know Mr. Enriquez is shaking his head. He may wanna speak to that.
I do, I do think it aligns more clearly with some of the case law. I don't think, and we've been doing training on searches and stuff, I don't think this is actually much of a change at all from a practical standpoint, from what we've been doing. 'Cause we've been, as the law has changed, we've been advising folks. But now, the School Board Association has basically done a rewrite to capture some of the language in terms of the reasonable suspicion and individualized suspicion. So, they've basically rewritten it. The old policy had been around for quite a while, and I think they just decided it's a, you know, to do a rewrite. But it is not, in my mind, not really a substantial change from what we've been doing in practice. But that, that's why there's not strikeouts. They, they basically have changed some of the language to parallel the Supreme Court cases.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Harrison?
That's essentially my concern, and you've done a great job of clarifying that for us. Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
No, just appreciate the summaries you sent, sent to us earlier. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kiger. Okay, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, you okay?
Yeah, I just have one question. And it's dealing with 15, uh, let's see. 1510 and 5120, the word diagrams is being used. What level of diagram are we going to provide? Is that just like an architectural rendering of the, of the school?
Schematic, yes, sir. That, and that's something that the maintenance department has provided to law enforcement, of essentially a PDF of the school schematic.
So, it's just doors, entries, windows, and...
If they were to respond to the school, to help them get to where they need to as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board members, it looks like we're going to the consent agenda. Dr. Lauter, I start, we'll be on this one. All right, and we can continue with 4.5, the policy and policy revisions on the second reading. And, board members, these are the ones that we previously looked at, and are the changes incorporated. And so, the changes that we asked are incorporated. And so, if you wanna go ahead now, we'll find out what you got on that.
Again, I'm not, I don't think you guys have many questions on these on the first read. So, I think we modified those, and I think we can...
I think everybody's more than likely okay with consent for the second reading policies. Everybody good? Okay, Dr. Lauter, we're good for consent on the second reading policies. All right, then, that's good, then. So, you guys finished up quite quick.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 4.6. This is the child nutrition procurement plan. And we've got Mr. Frank Fiorella and Dr. Kelly Probst here with us tonight. And so, good to see you both.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Y'all have a copy of the procurement plan. It has been approved by Mark Enriquez and Kelly Klutz. It matches our other procurement plan in the district. The only change is that on the board document, I said it would begin October 1st, and it'll start November 1st pending signature.
Well, the signature part'll be easy.
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay, board members, you've had this, you've reviewed it, and Dr. Probst has given us the changes. Do we have any comment or questions? Hearing none, we good for consent agenda?
Thank you.
Okay, you got that right quick. Frank, you didn't even have to talk. What about that?
I appreciate it.
You're kind of big.
Well, let me say this while, while I got you here, you know, and while, you know, for all the viewing audience and everything. I really appreciate the job you're doing, you know, and all that you've done, you and Dr. Probst, you know, for the first time in a while. It seems like that child nutrition is moving in an extremely positive way. You're coming up with creative things to make things better. And I, I really want you to know, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We have a great team and great people who work for us, and they work really hard every day, so...
It takes a good captain, though.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Okay, board members, we'll move on now to this one here. Will be Dr. Jason Van Heuclem to the podium. We'll talk about 4.07. This is the Spanish immersion expansion at Carle Fur Elementary. So, Dr. Van Heuclem, when you're ready.
Thank you. Sorry. First, I wanna take an opportunity to just give you a quick update on Spanish immersion at Fur Elementary School. It's been running now for a quarter. And by all of our initial data, it's been a success. Parents are really happy, kids are happy in the program. And so, we have an idea on the table that we would like to present today and have you approve, is that we would expand the Spanish immersion program at Fur Elementary School for a couple different reasons. But before, before we get into that, I do wanna kinda clarify this as a different approach than what we've done in the past with magnet schools, and, and kinda harness the power of our regular transfer process and call Carle Fur Elementary an open enrollment school. And really, the only difference there is that we would not offer transportation for this particular program. We're basically saying, "We've got space at Fur Elementary School. It holds 1,000 kids. And if parents would choose to send their kid to that school for the Spanish immersion program and provide their own transportation, why would we stop them from doing that?" And so, again, this is a, not a, not what we would consider traditional magnet, where we provide transportation and bus students all across the county. But we're saying to our community, "There's space. We have a program. It's only at one school. If you can make the transportation work for your family, you're welcome to come." One of the primary drivers for this was just the overwhelming demand we had for the Spanish immersion program within the Fur Elementary School attendance zone. A little bit surprising at first, when we opened it, we were hoping we would get 48 kids in the Fur attendance zone interested in it. As you see in that early paragraph, we had eight, we, we had to put 18 students on the waiting list, and that was just from within the attendance boundary. So, to extrapolate that out, it makes you think logically that there is a demand for language immersion education within the county, and therefore, we would wanna open that out to other families. Another driver for this is to maximize our school space. As we look at bringing on new, new schools and work with our county commissioners to ensure that we have the, enough building space for the anticipated 6,000 students that'll be here in the next 10 years, we wanna make sure that all of our schools are maxed out. Fur Elementary, we consider to be a, a school that has a, an attendance zone that's pretty static. There's not a lot of land in which to build and have new housing development. So, this 750 student enrollment is pretty static. Therefore, we think we can add some students to that and really maximize that space in Fur Elementary. Finally, in that same vein of argument, Fur Elementary is close to our population center. So, while the geographic center of Cabarrus County Schools is Concord, we know that the population center is closer to that Pablo Tent Road Harrisburg section. So, this potentially would draw families out of Harrisburg Elementary, Cox Mill, Odell, schools that we know are already overcrowded and will continue to be so, providing their own transportation out and fill up a school that we're gonna have a hard time filling up unless we redraw lines or do something else. So, there's some of the drivers for that proposal. I wanna kinda go down to page two, so you can see some of the numbers associated with that. In the first line, or first row, you see our current program, two classes, 48 students. And what we're proposing is that we double that next year at the kindergarten level. So, we're not gonna, the whole school isn't gonna be immersion next year again. You can only do this starting with kindergarten. So, you can see that extrapolate out over the next five to six years by adding that four, four classes for next year. So, that the current classrooms of two with 48 students, that's kinda your driving cohort. They'll stay the lead dogs in that, in that deployment. Down here, you have another chart that tries to anticipate the ratio of students involved in the program by attendance zone versus open enrollment. And I just used a 50-50 split. It could be less than 50-50 if we have a significant draw from the Fur attendance zone. But I thought 50-50 was, was appropriate. And so, you kinda have those numbers there. One key point to keep in mind is that's based on a maximum enrollment. And so, we start these programs out fully maxed out to the state max at 24 students in a classroom. But because of immersion education in third grade or fourth grade, if a student moves, leaves the, the district, or for whatever reason chooses not to be part of the program, it's really hard to replace those students, 'cause you can't just come into third grade Spanish immersion unless you've been in immersion from kindergarten. So, the only entrance into that program is gonna be students coming from another county that has a similar program, which is very few. So, over the, over the five years that you have that, you're gonna have some attrition with that. So, we would expect that. But you can see also the total enrollment there at Fur Elementary, you know, if it was maxed out, which I don't think it will be, it's very unlikely, you still would be under 1,000 students total. Last, you have the cost. So, of course, right now, we have a annual cost of, or a cost of $55,000. We pay for that through Title III funding, which is ESL funding. And here, what you also have is the extrapolation of teachers that we would hire to teach in that program. And each of those teachers are allocated to us at approximately $57,000 per teacher from the state of North Carolina. And we get, they don't always cost that much money. In fact, most of the time, they don't cost that much money because they're younger teachers. And so, we typically, on average, net about $7,500 in that scenario. And you can see that we can reinvest that back into the program to minimize the cost for the program. Okay? You do also have startup costs that we would need to use from our textbook supply money. Every classroom you open has an $18,000 supply cost for all the Spanish materials that you would need. But that's just a one-time cost per classroom. You can see, going from year one to, to the end, it kinda peaks there at $93,000, but then starts to trickle down, and we're back to $55,000 by 2020. Any questions?
Board members, if you have any questions? Mr. Schumaker, we'll start on your side.
Well, Jason, you know how I feel about this. I think it's a great program. And having a bilingual daughter, I know the advantage of this. And this is, if we'd have had it, I know we would've been involved with it if our children had the opportunity. How many kindergarten classes are there at Fur?
Right now, there's six.
Six. And so, we can make the logical assumption that there's eight first-grade classes and second-grade classes and that type of thing, then?
Si, uh, six. Six to seven in each grade level there, yeah. Six, six to seven in each grade level there, yeah.
Okay, and so you're, right now, you're recommending that we go to four classes, so we'll have two normal classes and then four splash classes?
No, you'll have four normal classes and four splash classes, because the two we're gonna add are gonna be open enrollment students, that are new students to the building. So right now, you have six, two of which are splash, we're gonna add two more classes, that brings us to eight, now four of eight, so two of six are splash now, we're gonna move to four of eight would be splash classrooms.
So as you progress through the years in your estimate, will we have enough classrooms to physically handle all these children, even though, you know, the school's built for close to 1,000? Do we have the classroom space, because we're adding two classrooms and, well, four classrooms a year?
Two a year, yeah.
Two, two a year, per grade level, as we go through this?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, we do have to consider some other programs that we currently house there because it's had space, so we have some special ed classrooms there, and we also have pre-kindergarten there that currently resides in the building, that might have to go outside of the building. You also have times where special ed classrooms take up a big room, because it's there, and really, it only has five to 10 kids in it, so they need to go into what it was designed for a resource classroom. So those are the type of decisions that Mr. Roberts would have to make. But, you know, as we walked around the building and did those estimations, he would be able to do that.
On the funding portion, obviously, we're going to need, we're gonna increase the number of teachers, and could you repeat what you noted about funding to make sure that, you know, we understand how the money is being used, or how we're actually going to take care of this program?
Sure, yeah. So with any, by increasing 24 students, you're gonna add a teaching position, that's automatically funded through our allotment. So when we do this exchange with visiting international faculty, there's a conversion formula that allows us to, they give us X amount of money to pay for that teacher's total package, typically based on that teacher's experience and their master's level, or whatever education they come to us, they cost less than that total amount of money that we get. So we get to keep that money, excuse me, and we can reinvest that into the program, and that's why you see in that last column there, you have $7,500 per teacher subtracted out of the total. So the more VIF teachers we have in the building, the more we have that reinvested back in the program. You're gonna see, I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna have 12 VIF teachers in that school to be the Spanish teachers for the program.
Now, implied is that VA, the VF?
VIF, yeah.
VIF is going to be around for the next 10 years, do you think that that is illogical?
Yeah, yeah, it's been around, I don't know how long it's been around, how long time, longest I've been here.
Okay, so we can reasonably expect that they'll still be here in 2020 or thereabouts?
Yeah.
One other question, is, you know, you were talking about the attrition rate of being about 8%, and, you know, a child, you have some attrition at third grade, and is there a reasonable expectation that you could allow children to test into the program and combine some tests to allow for a way to counteract attrition, to make sure, you know, you don't want to accept children that can't be successful, but at the same time, you want those that could be successful?
Yeah, so typically, that gets harder as the kids get older, but they do, that is how you determine whether you would let, allow a student in, so, you know, you have rare circumstances where kids have unique experiences in their life, maybe they lived abroad, maybe they have a parent that speaks Spanish, and so while they weren't in an immersion program, they have some affinity for the language, or they have some base, and we would make those decisions on a case-by-case basis. I mean, we have a vested interest in maxing that number out as much as possible, so over time, you know, that does go down, and we want to try to max that out.
Now, is there any expectation that this will go beyond the fifth grade, sixth grade?
Good question. We actually have a teacher who's a, she teaches Spanish at Northwest Cabarrus High School, she's getting her master's degree, she's doing a study for me on that part of her program. So she's talking with Mary Beth at Winkler, and she's also talking with Greg Hall about how those schools might support this long-term. Typically, what happens is in middle school, you might have those students learn science and social studies in the Spanish language, and then they take math and English in their, in English, and then in high school, they encourage those students to take, to start a third language. So they kind of max out, and they're fluent in Spanish by seventh or eighth grade, and then they get to J.M. Robinson, and they're gonna, they would take a third language like Chinese, or French, or whatever else is offered, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, you have any comments on this?
Yes, well, first of all, when we said we wanted to start the program, we said we wanted to start it, and then we wanted to get a report on it before we expanded it, before we did anything else on it.
Right.
Now, we haven't had it in place that long, so we have no, it's no numbers on it, we haven't been able to test these children we put in to begin with. Now, we're jumping the gun, and we said, ah, come on, let's do some more! So this girl ain't on board, I can tell you this right now, because we have no, no, no kind of testing or anything that we can say, hey, we done a great job! Because we've not been able to test these kids to say, hey, their reading levels jumped six points, whatever, we don't have anything, any data to prove it.
We don't have it here, but we do have it in the state. So the two data points I would point you to, number one is the demand data, I would argue that you have demand in the county.
Well, for 18 kids to say, 18 kids, and I'm gonna put $40,000, you divide 18 kids into $40,000, that's not too good a numbers.
Well, what I'd say to that is, what I really, what really stuck out to me was you have a full cohort of students at Fur of about 120 kids, and of those 120, 55% of them wanted to have immersion, over half of them, and that's just within the attendance zone. So that made me think, okay, if half the kids at Fur would have liked to have done this, would that extrapolate to our other communities within Cabarrus County? I don't have any data to prove that, but I would venture to place a bet that they, that we do have that type of demand within Cabarrus County. Fur is a, well, it's a school that represents our county, I mean, it's a pretty typical school in our county. Then the other data, they, you're right, we don't have any academic achievement data for Cabarrus County Schools, we do have that data for the state, these programs that have been in existence over many years, and their data's really sound, and we have reasonably good expectations.
Well, but we're, but we're at Cabarrus, and we said that's what we were going to do.
You're right, yes.
That's what we said we were going to do, and that's what I would like to stick to, and Cabarrus is not, we're not the state, and that's what we said we were going to do, and I don't want to put, I'm one that, I want the data for our community.
Sure.
I've lived here over 30 years, I know my community, and I live in that area, so I know that area pretty well. And that's one of the things in saying that I'm gonna put, and just saying 18 children from that area, again, that does not, does not go real well. So that, one of the things I would like to do, and I do not want to, you know, drag this out, I would like to put this on the action agenda, so I will stop at this point.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, let me ask you this, then. Now, we're talking about kindergartners now.
I know we are.
Now, what kind of tests would you recommend that we give them?
Well, we, we, the reading scores are a perfect example, because this is one of the things that this program's supposed to do, they're supposed to help them with the rating, and if you look at the scores that we have from Fur, the reading scores were very bad, very, I mean, not bad, they were not, they were not the best, let's put it this way. If you look at the percentage of what we were seeing at Fur, it was, they were not at, not at a very, the best level, and they were supposed to improve with this program. And so that's what I had made the comment, I said, okay, you show me where these scores improve, and then I'll be more than happy to jump on that wagon and ride with you. And I said, you show me these scores after this is in place for at least a year, and show me where these, these scores improve. Did I not?
You did, yes.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, and you're right, Carolyn, I remember the discussion this time last year, whenever it was.
It has not even been a year, and now you're, you're, you're going after me again without even, you know, with this. And so I'm saying, give us time, you show me where these things improve, and then, instead of giving the time, you're jumping, jumping the gun. So I don't want, I want to show, show me some improvement before I do this.
Well, we can go to the action agenda, that won't be no problem, and then, you know, whatever the board wants, you know, I've told you before, I'm just one, you know, and whatever the board wants is what we'll do, but...
Where I'm coming from, we've got teacher assistants. These teachers' assistants can be put into classrooms, they serve a lot more students, and for $40,000, that could get me at least two, and we've got schools with no teacher assistants at all, and they can go into classrooms right now, and they can do things right now. And that's where I'm coming from, and those, this, these dollars can be used for salaries, and that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Ms....